One, two, three, we can release there.
Okay, we're live now, you're on Facebook?
Okay.
Okay, did you John?
Alright, so they're live with us, with Pinoy Hour, of course, on behalf of the crew. I have my colleague, Mr. Lu. And on the technical side, or the background, will be Mr. Randy. And of course, he does the mic and technological side, the cameras and so on. But of course, you're live with us here in southern Alberta, which is Lethbridge. And Pinoy Hour, basically, Pinoy is to Canucks, it's a colony.
That's right, yes.
So we call it, we call ourselves Pinoy.
That's right, yes, yes.
So welcome to Jess FM, right, Jess FM station?
We're live at Jess FM, of course, we're simultaneously live at the Jess FM app and through the jessfm.ca desktop. And we're also live on our Facebook page, which is Pinasia. And of course, we have our very special guest for September 25th, which is today. I will introduce to you the honorable good man, Mr. Zachary Gibb for Councilor's Office of Wurris.
Thank you, thank you guys, thank you Lu, thank you John.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys, yeah, that's great.
And of course, kindly introduce Mr. Zachary for our audience. And he's pretty much a friendly guy.
Sure, sure, absolutely, right on, no, and you guys are friendly too, that's fantastic. We work well together, that's great, and that's the job of a city councillor, is to work well with the people. My name's Zachary Gibb, I'm born and raised in Lethbridge. I've been here for 26 years, and I've never lived anywhere else, and I don't have an interest to either. I've decided to run for city council this year, because I'm passionate about this city, and I believe that I can bring a lot to the table, and represent our community in a great and open and honest and positive way. And I was really inspired to do that, so I can make a great difference for our city, and make it a fantastic and wonderful and even more vibrant place to be.
That's very nice.
Well, thank you, well, thank you.
You can just feel the positivity that our guest here brings to the whole room.
Absolutely.
And before we throw in our formal questions, I just want to throw in our honourable guest here. Basically, speaks Tagalog to me, which is our local Filipino language.
Oh, very little, very little.
Okay, I was, I was...
Salamat!
There you go.
Absolutely, yes.
So that's amazing, like, do you, are you, do you study like our language, or do you have friends?
So I have, yes, that's a great question, a little bit of both, actually. I have many, many Filipino and Tagalog friends in town, and they've taught me so much about the language and the culture, and I'm so grateful for that opportunity, because the Filipino and the Pinoy culture is an incredible culture. And you guys take care of your people, and you take care of each other, and it's such a good example to set for the rest of the world, and it's amazing to see. And it's amazing to see the Filipino community just thriving in Lethbridge too. There are so many Pinoy's in Lethbridge, and I think that's wonderful. I think anything that we can do to attract immigration to our city is fantastic. You guys chose Lethbridge as a place to come and settle and live, live your lives, and that's incredible, and that is something that we need to continue to do across all cultures. But it's very great to see so many Filipino people, and they've become great friends of mine, absolutely.
That's amazing, so there you go, we have a half Filipino here with Mr. Zachary Gibb.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's a very amazing language. When I saw you were sending me messages, you perfectly spelled it, I was like surprised, so...
Yeah, yeah, very good spell check.
That's amazing, though. So coming from a Filipino like me, and of course, we'll throw in some questions, as we usually do.
Absolutely.
So on the lighter side, how do you like the weather in Lethbridge? Like, do you think that this is one of the factors why so many immigrants choose to move here compared to other cities on the north side of Alberta?
Okay, absolutely, and I can attest to this, because I've asked several people, and not just immigrants to town, people that have come here from other cities in the province and things like that. Like, why did you choose Lethbridge, is the question I ask anybody, whether they're from the United States, the Philippines, from Saskatchewan. And it, nine times out of 10, I would be, I would tell you that it is the weather, and that is what people say, they like the climate, it's quite dry. When people think of Lethbridge weather, the first thing that comes to mind, of course, is the wind. It is a very, very windy place to live. But that brings its own benefits as well, like Chinooks make our winters very mild. It snows one day, and then the next day it's all gone. Chinook actually means "snow eater", and that is probably the biggest drawback and the biggest pushback that I hear from people, is that it is just too darn windy. But people are drawn to our climate, you know, our winters are very mild and temperate compared to Calgary, compared to Edmonton, and that's a big draw, and we're seeing a lot of people come down from those urban centres to settle in Lethbridge, because they love Alberta, and they want to stay in Alberta. But they don't particularly like the weather of the other major cities. So that is definitely attractive to Lethbridge, absolutely, it's what I've heard from more people than you'd think.
Yes, and that's what me and John Dukasie came from Montreal, and I lived in Edmonton for a decade or so.
Both very cold.
Lethbridge has a very nice weather.
Yeah, that's absolutely.
I can attest to what Mr. Gibb is saying. So other than the weather, of course, what do you think makes our great city, Lethbridge, stand out compared to our larger neighbours like Calgary and Edmonton?
That's an excellent question. We hold our own compared to the other large urban centres in Alberta, absolutely. We're a thriving community, we're a vibrant community, we have, we're a small-town city, is how I like to describe us. We have a small-town feel, you can get from one side of town to the other in 10, 15 minutes, depending on traffic, of course, right? And we have the amenities of a big city too, you know, and we have, we have a lot, a lot to draw people into our city, whether it's the new rec centre on the west side, the NMAC centre, our beautiful coulies and river valleys, you know, we have fantastic parkland. We have more parkland than the cities like Calgary, Edmonton, per capita, and by size too, you know?
It's with information.
Yeah, and that's a huge draw into town for nature lovers and people who like that, you know? There's big business, there's small business, there's any kind of business that you can imagine in Lethbridge, and we have a great, just a beautiful city that we call home, and it's growing by the day, and we're at 100, nearly 100,000 people. And as we approach that, it's time that we ask ourselves what we want the Lethbridge of 30 years down the line to be. What is the Lethbridge of the future going to be? When I was born, Lethbridge was just over 60,000 people, and in 26, almost 27 years now, we have almost approached 100,000 people. And it is time that we look back 30 years and see how far we have come, and then compound that, and see how far that we can go, and what we can do to make this just an absolutely breathtaking place to come and settle and to live.
Well, that's a very good point, the growth has to match the development of the city.
And the demand, you know, and the demand so far has been incredible. We're the fourth fastest, we're the fourth largest city in the province, and we're the fifth fastest-growing city in the country itself. Our economy is booming, we are an agricultural community down here, so we weathered the storm of the Albertan downturn, like the economic downturn with the oil fields and that sector. And Lethbridge has emerged almost stronger, if not stronger, because we have that agricultural community, we have these small businesses, these large businesses in town that attract these people, and that is why we're thriving, and it's incredible to see.
That's what we get to know, and very informative. So let me just play in a future scenario here, Mr. Gibb. Once you are in office, what will be some of your initiatives to improve the city of Lethbridge?
Absolutely, you know, I will give credit to our current city council. I believe they've done the best job that they can do in making sure our city is on the right track. And they just introduced a CIP, which is the Capital Improvement Programme. And that is basically a detailed list of what the city is going to spend money on. We had over $260 million worth of proposed projects, but only a very small fraction of that we were able to implement and to allocate for projects. So that being said, while we're on the right track, I think it is time that we move forward and get some new voices on council, get some fresh perspectives, you know? We've had certain city councillors on council for years and years and years, and although they have done a very good job and are competent workers, I think it is time that we allow a fresh perspective in the chamber and move forward with that. I am a pro-growth, pro-expansion candidate. I believe there's a lot of projects on the table that current city council has announced, such as a new performing arts centre. I think it's time that we move forward with that, the economic opportunities from something like that are incredible. $62 million has been allocated from the CIP to get that project shovel-ready. And it is time we look forward, we've been talking about a performing arts centre for the last several elections, and now is the time, we are a vibrant community, we have the university, the New West Theatre, the Genevieve Yates Memorial Centre is a beautiful gem of our city, but unfortunately, it's just at the capacity, we just don't have the space and the facilities for performers to utilise that space to its maximum potential. And a great example of a performing arts centre done right is Medicine Hat, right next door. A city that is 30,000 people smaller than Lethbridge, and they just built the Esplanade, and the economic benefits have been incredible. And we could get, we could get performers from all over the world coming to Lethbridge, and have enough room for everybody to come and see them. So that's why I'm for a performing arts centre. Furthermore, curbside recycling, that's another contentious issue that people...
I've seen it on your profile, you're very passionate about recycling.
Absolutely, absolutely, you know, and recycling only works when everybody does it. And we might not agree with the way that the current city council went ahead and kind of ignored the plebiscite and ignored the business community, and just went ahead and forged ahead with the current plan. But I do believe in that plan, and I do believe it is time to implement a curbside recycling programme. When you have small towns just outside of Edmonton and Calgary that have curbside recycling, and they're a fraction of the population of Lethbridge, and we're kind of the last holdout in the province that doesn't have curbside recycling, I think that that is a problem, you know, and like I said, recycling only works when everybody does it. We do have three great recycling stations in town, on each side of town, one south, one west, one north. And I salute and commend the people that use those, and I use them as well. But what about the people that don't have access to that? What about the people who don't have a car, or can't bring all of their recycling on transit, or get around on a bike, what are they supposed to do? So with the city-operated curbside recycling programme, that brings it to them. And people might be a little bit cautious or worried that their garbage will pile up, since the current plan for city council is every two weeks they would pick up garbage, and then alternate, and then pick up recycling one week. I think if you recycled though, that would negate the garbage, and you would have half recycling, and that would cut your garbage in half, and then you would have half garbage, and that would cut your garbage in half. And then that would be, that would just be an incredible opportunity for everybody to reduce what goes into our landfill, and we can recycle the cardboard and the glass and the plastic, and make things, make things that, recycle, that's exactly what recycling is, to make new things from old things, and that is very important. I do understand the pushback from citizens, there are certain citizens that think it is a waste of money and resources, but I'm here to tell you right now that I don't believe that that is the case. I think that it is time that we move forward with the city-operated curbside recycling programme and build the material recovery facility, so we can process all of this stuff in Lethbridge itself and keep all that kind of stuff in town, you know? And it's another economic development for the city of Lethbridge, and it's a convenience, it's a service. It's just like the police and fire station. It's a nominal fee, it's a small $7 a month fee for a service that covers everybody in town. And people, people are worried about what's going to happen to the private businesses in town. I've spoken with representatives of some of them, to a degree, and that's the, that's the nature of being an entrepreneur, is sometimes the market changes. And I would offer, offer some support to those people, and reach out and say, hey, you know, residential recycling only makes up for 25% of total recycling in town. Why not reach out to the big corporations and to the condo boards and apartment boards that wouldn't necessarily be a part of the curbside recycling programme? And that's where they could make their money, and then that would be a huge bonus, because you get those people, and then you get a curbside recycling programme that keeps our city clean, that caters to the people that don't have access to the recycling facilities, and so on and so forth.
And all the subsidize pretty much the cost too, right?
Over time, over time, yes, yes, as far, as far as I'm aware. Also, I'm for expanding the exhibition grounds, there's $72 million in shadow funding, so now that, what that means is that we have to find that money that is not allocated in the CIP like the performing arts centre. With the performing arts centre, that money is there, it's ready to go, we're ready to get the shovel in the ground and start construction on that whenever, whenever the city council decides and sees fit, and after all the, all the studies and land acquisitions and things like that, deciding where it goes. But with the exhibition park, it's a little bit of a different story, where we have to find that money before we can start that project. Now, I was happy to see that it was included in the last city council CIP, but it's still a concern, because that's over $70 million that we have to find. And that's where I would come in as city councillor and lobby our friends at the federal and provincial government, and ask them for grants. Yeah, for funding for something like this, you know, in Agriplex, there's been talks of a convention centre there as well, you know? And we'd have to look into the feasibility of both of those things. But that is what I would be willing to do as city council, because people don't necessarily realise that the city doesn't pay for all of this, all of these projects, you know? We do reach out to our federal and provincial partners and private businesses and entrepreneurs, and that's what we need to do, we can't turn our back on our agriculture community, because as I mentioned at the start of our video, that's what's been keeping us afloat during this economic downturn, and we need to give back to them, because they've given us so much. And that's why I'm for expanding the exhibition grounds, and that's another area of economic opportunity too, you know? If we have world-class facilities, people will come from Montana.
Yeah, tourism.
Oh, tourism is huge, and tourism is a big part of Lethbridge, and I'm glad to see some candidates, and I'm always for tourism too, but we need to promote that as well. We have a lot to offer here. But with the exhibition park, we would see ranchers come from Montana, from Saskatchewan, from B.C., from all over the country. And that would be a boom to our economy, that would just give us so much more access to things, people would want to come here, and some people would even stay here, you know what I mean? So those are some big-ticket projects, I'm also for the third bridge, the Chinook Trail River Crossing, as you, as I'm sure you guys have seen. It is time we move forward with that, because it just makes sense. Our city is growing so rapidly, the west side has been the largest, as witnessed, the largest amount of growth out of all the sides of town. Since 1970, there's been 40, almost 40,000 people have moved to the west side. The very first census on the west side, there was 70 people, or 30 people, rather, I beg your pardon. 30 people lived over there in 1970, and now we're at 38,000. And that is why it's time we move forward, it's kind of almost embarrassing that we only have one access, or two access points, rather, to get to the west side, whether it's Crow's Nest Trail or Whoop Up Drive. And if anyone who's driven home to the west side at 5 o'clock knows that it gets quite congested up there, you know? And in the wintertime, that deck freezes. And last winter, there was two separate events, where I know the highway and Whoop Up Drive were both closed. Now, that's a huge problem, because if mom's on the south side, and she needs to get to her kids that have the furnace on and the crockpots turned on on the west side of town, and she's not able to do that, that's a huge problem.
Yeah, businesses, the losses of time, hours for everybody else.
Absolutely, and you know, they've decided where they're going to put Chinook Trail, it's going to connect over by Tudor, and then over in Riverstone, and that makes sense, you know? A big-ticket project like this is going to cost a lot of money, it's not just like a bridge across a river, it's a bridge across a canyon, just about, right? Everyone who's driven the west side hills know that it's quite the trip, or if you biked it, it gases you by the time you get to the top. But it's time that we move forward with that, just for infrastructure needs, as the city grows, it's time to do that. The west side's only getting bigger, the south side's only getting bigger, and the thing that I've heard on the doors, most, most people are in agreement that we need this third bridge, but the people who don't say that, oh, it's up to the west side to pay for their third bridge, and I tell them, wait a second, it's not just a bridge for westsiders, it's not just a bridge for southsiders. It's a bridge, exactly, it's a bridge for everybody in town, and it will lower the, lower the times to get there, it'll increase our emergency response times, and it will be a definite improvement for our community.
Of course.
Yeah, and construction for that is slated for 2032, there are studies planned for 2025, environmental assessments, the design sort of thing. But we really need to fast-track that, because what happens if we have a flood, and Whoop Up Drive gets washed away in a very extreme case scenario, mind you? But we just need another access point, so we can, so we can provide that service to the residents of our community, it just makes sense. As Whoop Up is the busiest road in town, it just makes sense to build another one, to alleviate the pressure off of that bridge.
We agree, we agree 100%.
Absolutely, no, I'm glad to hear that, glad to hear that.
And that's really, you know... So as our guest, honourable Gibb, is saying, that's pretty specific. At some point, you even mentioned Medicine Hat, their cultural...
The Performing Arts Centre, yeah.
Performing Arts Centre in Edmonton. So that's a very great idea, that's why we need a fresher idea, vision in our council, by saying that we use what works in other cities, larger than small, and we can incorporate here in Lethbridge, that's exactly what we need in council.
Oh, salamat, guapo, I appreciate that very much, absolutely. And you know, it is, it is, you know, we have to also keep in mind, because on my platform, there's a lot of big spending practices and things like that. But we also have to keep in mind fiscal responsibility and councillor accountability at the same time. So we need to make sure that we do things right the first time. A great example of this would be at the top of Whoop Up Drive, how they're just starting to twin it now, when it should have been done five years ago, you know, when Whoop Up Drive was initially started, you know? We might not have had the traffic flow at start, but it makes smart sense to make an initial investment that might be a little bit more than you expect, to save money over time, so we don't have to go back and revisit this, and now we're spending even more money to twin this road. And not only Whoop Up, but there's another one on the west side, University Drive, going to Sunridge. That's a very, very busy road, you know, and same with the north side too. I think it's 23rd Avenue North, the one that goes to Walmart, that's only single lanes, and that's one of the busiest access, access points on the north side. And that's why we have to be fiscally responsible, we have to do things right the first time, so we're not spending, spending extra money doing things unwisely and doing it right at the same time. Now, cultural councillor, councillor accountability, that means that we need to implement a ward system for Lethbridge. A lot of people don't agree, they think Lethbridge is too small for a ward system, and now for our viewers who don't know what a ward system is. Right now, Lethbridge's government is elected at large, so that means a city councillor could be elected, all eight of them could be from the south side, all eight of them could be from the north side, all, all eight of them could be from the south side, and all eight of them, to be quite frank, could be from the same street, the same apartment building, you know? So what I've heard on the doors is that there isn't enough regional accountability and councillor accountability due to this. So what I'm calling for is a ward system, so three, there would be three councillors, let's just say, for the west side, three for the south side, and three for the north side. And that would bring an equal voice for our three distinct and unique sides of town to the table, so everybody gets taken care of, instead of just certain pockets of town.
That's a very good idea.
And it will give a representation to every area.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's no monopoly of decision-making, that might favor one area over the other.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, and we would be forced to work together even more. Like, I think current council, they've had their hiccups, but they've done a pretty decent job of working together, I would say. But with a ward system, your councillor would live down the street, he or she would experience the same problems when your power goes out, or a water line breaks, and you could go to them directly and address your concern with a neighbour, instead of just somebody who's never even been to your neighbourhood, or visited your street, or experienced the problems that you have. And like I said, cities the size of Calgary, of course, have a ward system just because of the population, it just makes sense, but a lot of people push back with us in Lethbridge, because we're not even at 100,000 yet, we're very close. But we have these three unique and distinct sides of town that each have their own needs, where a ward system would absolutely thrive. I've heard from many people, about 90% of the people I've talked to are for this, or at least for opening a conversation up about, about making Lethbridge a ward system for more governments. And as city councillor, I would be so willing to open that book and to lead the charge on that.
And it's better to do it now, while it's still growing.
Yeah.
Because if you leave it too long, one area might be too far behind already, because those councillors are just concentrated in improving, maybe unintentionally, one area of the city.
Absolutely, absolutely, and right now, we have a fairly even spread of population, and as the city grows, let's just say the west side becomes the largest side of town, then we'll look at adding maybe another councillor to that side of town, you know? And if, and if another side of town shrinks, in lieu of a different side of town, we could look at shuffling them around, but for right now, I think three equal and distinct voices per side of town would be the best way to go. Whether or not that's what our ward system would look like, that's just, that's just an example that I have.
That's a very good, so two main points that our guests are saying. When it comes to the bridge, we need foresight, do it right the first time, so we don't have to spend more money and possibly waste the money that was spent before, and spend lesser to just continue the project, rather than, you know, make adjustments to correct it. And then the second one is equal, pretty much equal representation and decision-making, so each of the sides, or each areas of Lethbridge will have the same power when it comes to its own...
Decision-making.
Decision-making process, yeah.
That's right.
Well, that's, that's very good, I didn't even know about that. That's why we need the fresh new ideas and new kind of thinking in the city council.
I appreciate that.
No, so now that being said, you know, there's a lot of Asian communities, not just Asian communities, but immigrants coming into Lethbridge, of course. What do you think is one or some of the contributions the Asian community gives to the city?
Absolutely, so what I have to say to all of our Asian immigrants and all immigrants to Lethbridge in general is welcome. Welcome, please come, please stay, invest your time, invest your money, settle here. There's so many Asian cultures in town, and they each bring a unique perspective and add to the tapestry that is Lethbridge. You know, there's been an immigration boom in town, and there, like, there's Pinoy, and there's people from Bhutan, and there's Chinese, the Chinese community. And they each bring such interesting ideas and perspectives from wherever they may come from. And that's, that's what makes our city so great, is that we can draw from this big pool of ideas and cultures and make the best culture for Lethbridge that we can. And the contributions of the Asian community, all, every, every single nationality is just incredible, and it is something that Lethbridge needs to continue to attract and to draw, because you, as immigrants, are just as welcome and accepted and of value as somebody like me who was born and raised here, you know, like, welcome to the city, and please, please keep contributing and doing the great things that you're doing, because you're making our economy stronger, you're making our city stronger, you're making our province stronger, and you're making our country stronger. And I salute you for choosing Lethbridge out of anywhere else in the world that you could have ever chosen. You chose here, and we need to do everything we can to give you those opportunities that we were afforded as people that were born here, you know? And it's, it's great to see, and I encourage more.
You're definitely right, that's the least we could do to a very accepting country and a very accepting city. So that's the message for the Asian community, you know? Do whatever we can to help the city and the country, and then we're all going to grow together and, you know, much better and more prosperous.
Absolutely, when we work together, we can accomplish anything.
That's right. Just united Lethbridge.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Thank you, and yeah, we feel welcome, and we appreciate the invitation. We will embrace it, and we will do our best to contribute to our community.
Fantastic, oh, that's great.
And touching side of the sports, like, we support the Lethbridge Hurricanes, the Lethbridge Bulls, the Kodiaks, the Pronghorns, and other local sports team. Like, what do you think we can add more? Like, one of our Latino community actually threw in a question there. He mentioned, he's Emilio, one of our shows here, he has a Latino Cafe Sports. He mentioned what project is about our sports in town. That this gentleman, they're really into like soccer.
Oh, certainly, certainly. Now, for that specific question, I'm not sure if Amelia was that in?
It's Amelia.
Yes, thank you for the question. I'm not sure if you know, but we have a soccer centre in town, right behind the NMAC centre, that if you haven't checked it out, you love soccer, I would definitely recommend to check that out. And we have several sports fields and soccer fields that you can, you can check out during the warmer months, you don't really want to play soccer outside in the winter sometime. But on a broader note, we have the NMAC centre. We just built this brand-new recreation/leisure centre on the west side, the ATB Centre, and that's incredible, it's a fantastic addition to our community. And for the sports community, that's, that's a boom, that's exactly what they needed. We have so many venues and so many facilities around town for people who enjoy sports to enjoy. Like I said, the Service Credit Union Stadium right behind the NMAC centre, the NMAC centre itself. We have several sports fields in the industrial park right behind the north Walmart here in Lethbridge that you can enjoy anytime. And it's incredible to see the community, and it's interested in sports, you know? It's very important to stay active, it's incredible. Also, the Lethbridge Hurricanes, that, that is a team that has just exploded, especially recently, like, they are doing so well, always cheering for those guys, you know? And as Canadians, hockey is very important to us, you know? And we're, we're very unique, we have a strong hockey team that represents our city in a professional and courteous manner, and they work their heart and soul out on that ice, and they've done a great job this year, and it's, it's great to see, and you know how many people have started out as Hurricanes and then have gone into the NHL itself? It's so many, you know, and that's fantastic, and that's something that we need to keep promoting, keep promoting that we have a hockey team here in Lethbridge, keep promoting that we have these venues to go and visit and to utilise, you know? Because the more people that use them, the more opportunities we have to make, make more, you know? And create new, new venues and things like that.
Goes back, goes back to the city.
Absolutely, absolutely, and you know, I think the city has done a fine job with what we have. I think we're, right now, we're at an adequate level, especially with the new development on the west side with the ATB Centre. I think that was a great, a great thing to do for our sporting community. So now, now that they have that, I would look, like to look towards something for artistic community with the Performing Arts Centre, with something for infrastructure like the third bridge, and a city service like curbside recycling. It all works together to make our city a great and vibrant... It all works together to make our city a great and vibrant and beautiful place to live. And when you combine all of them together with fiscal responsibility and smart spending and doing things right the first time and with councillor accountability. That will be a recipe for almost, there's no such thing as a perfect government, but with all of those things working together, you would come closer than most. Absolutely.
And at least not one area will be left out, you know.
No, that's right.
Recycling, the the city will be booming with lots of people and businesses.
Yeah.
But still gonna be clean and very pleasant to to live.
Yeah, even cleaner than it is now.
Yes, that's right. Well, uh talking about cleaning the city, we salute, of course, our very noble and courageous police officers. And firefighters and, you know, EMS and uh like uh my colleague here says, DJ John, the Lethbridge finest. So uh what do you think uh us, as uh residents and immigrants of this uh. Great city uh should be doing to help our uh local officials, especially the police, the firefighters to. To make Lethbridge uh it's safe now, but a lot safer and and better and nicer than than. And hopefully there'll be a lot uh more of those uh, you know, ideas that will come from you to.
Certainly, now I appreciate that question and as you finally said, they are our finest. These people put their lives out every day to keep us safe, this summer we saw so many fires in town. And and Waterton Lakes, that was another fine example um of people working together, risking their lives to save to save a national treasure. Uh like Waterton Lakes, to save the lives of people in apartment fires, you know, and these people don't ask for thanks. And they need to be thanked and and saluted for their service, like you said, absolutely. Now, I commend the work that our police and our fire services do, I have several friends that work for both of those. Both of those institutions and our paramedics, of course, all emergency services are essential to keep a city safe, of course. Now, what I can say, a part of my platform, um in the last CIP, in the last budget, a city council approved a new west side fire hall. Which is very important, as far as I know, the Mike Mountain Horse Station that's built right at the very top of Whoop Up Drive was built back in the seventies. Um to service five thousand people, that's that was its service uh range. Now, the west side is the largest side of town, there's almost forty thousand people over there and that fire station is woefully inadequate. Although the people that work there are our finest, the station and the facility itself needs to be replaced and kudos to city council for realizing that. And and for approving the the new west side fire station. Now, what I would suggest, because in my platform, I have a, I have a um um uh an idea. To add on to the west side police, or the we- west side fire station by including a police detachment in it as well. Now, what that would look like is either just an office in the front or the back and then you'd have the fire services in the front. The police services in the back, that would lower response times for the west side, keep that community a bit safer. With the fire station, we can finally move forward with a with a service that is right now strained on the west side, you know. We have the brand new fire station downtown, which is a great asset to the community, but it still takes a while to travel across Whoop Up Drive. And if we have a fire station over on the west side, that we fiscally responsibly incorporate a police detachment. Into in the planning stages, so we don't have to retrofit a new building for a police detachment, so we don't have to build a standalone one. We can put them together, save the money, create kind of an emergency headquarters over on that side of town. And that will be beneficial for everybody who who lives on the west side, absolutely. Um furthermore, with uh safe consumption sites, um we have decided to move forward with that, a location has been chosen. The old Pulse nightclub right across from the old London Drugs, the new fit for less, that has been approved. Now, this this is a very, very contentious issue too, and I do understand it too, I was uh. I carefully considered everything before before reaching a decision on where I stand on this. But what got me was the fact that our police, the head of our police service and the head of our fire service are calling for this. This is not about babysitting drug users, this is provi- this is about providing a safe space for them to get off the streets. To get out of the fields, to get out of the alleyways and and discarding used needles and drug paraphernalia where our children play, you know. And it will cost way less money to have a safe consumption site than it will to continue on with the current program where. Every time there's a needle found in a in a park, somebody has to get dispatched over there or 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 certain. Personnel will have to be dispatched, but if we have a centralized place, and the thing is, this is away from residential. Uh areas, there's there's no, there's no real residence residencies where this location is. No matter where you put it, people are going to protest, but this is an area that's within one point five kilometers, I believe, of where most of the issues are. So it's very accessible for these people to go and to use, and it's about giving them help. They'll be surrounded by healthcare professionals, they'll be off of our streets, they'll be getting the help that they need. This isn't, like I said, this isn't us babysitting them, this is us giving them help. Because the fentanyl crisis in in Lethbridge particularly, Albert- uh the country as a whole, but southern Alberta particularly. Is twenty four percent higher than anywhere else and that's gotta stop before we lose any more bright people that have just gotten sucked into. The wrong kind of crowd, you know, like if we can offer these people help and give them and give them. A branch to hold while while they struggle with their addiction. This is, this is totally beneficial and it's what our police and our fire services are calling for, so for that reason, I am for the safe consumption space. Uh because that's what our emergency service personnel are asking for, absolutely, and they do a fine job and we don't want to. We want to make sure that their jobs are as easy as possible, because putting your life on the line is the hardest job that you can possibly have.
So am I correct to to assume that what pretty much this uh kind of uh system will will do? With the, you know, the the fentanyl crisis and and drug addiction being in in one area is uh. We're not saying that we're tolerating or encouraging them, we're just pretty much uh having them being overseen by people.
Yeah.
So it's safer and more in a bit of way regulated than just uh being scattered all around the city.
Yeah, this isn't about us tolerating them, because these folks are gonna do this regardless of our acceptance or not. But what we can do is to curb this problem is to help them by providing a a providing an institution like this for them to use. And it it just makes sense and like uh that's, it's just uh it's just what is needed, it's what our police and our fire services are calling for. It is what what we need to do as a community to make sure that even the le- the least of fortunes get uh have a have a proper voice. Get the care that they deserve.
So that's pretty much just the first step, you know, we're not uh ending it uh there.
Yeah, and the thing about a can- safe consumption site is that there's very, very limited uh financial burden to the city, these programs are provincially funded. Um so uh that's uh that really does take the financial burden off of the city.
And it's not like we're the guinea pigs of of this kind of party, we've seen it in Europe, it's been very effective in in most of the countries there.
Luckily, we have one already in Vancouver and uh we have one in Toronto.
Yeah, yeah, and the bigger urban centers.
That's correct. And they're planning to have one in Montreal as well, so uh we're we're not the first ones, so.
No, absolutely not.
We have to progress, we have to stay forward.
And again, it's better to start it in a smaller city than when you're gonna have with tens of thousands of people already hooked in and. That's harder to to do, it's better to to start uh when it's not that big.
And not, it has a a little to do with the size too, but just our location in the country and how many people are actually. Uh using using fentanyl and and harmful drugs, you know, like I said, it's it's a very high rate compared to the rest of the country. And it's time we do something about it, you know, and it's not just for them, it's for everybody in the community, like the children that play on the playgrounds and. And experience needles in in the in the gravel and the sand, you know, we don't want that, absolutely not, so if we can centralize it, give these people help. Keep the keep the problems off the streets and keep the the drug debris off the streets, it's win, win, win uh for everyone.
So the point is making making it more manageable.
Yes.
I couldn't agree more.
That's good.
So uh I'm just gonna throw in another question, cause uh I've heard most of your uh platforms and your plans for the city. I mean, after you get elected, Honorable Gibb, and receive the votes from us, what can we expect? From you as a representative, like the summary?
Very good.
So we can throw it to them.
Well, you can bet that I'm going to work tooth and nail for the people of this city, um to represent everybody um as they deserve, you know. And to carefully consider, even if it's something that is against what I personally believe or or disagree with or against my platform. Everybody should have a say at what gets done in this city and it should be considered honestly and and truthfully and optimistically. And if it's a great idea, we'll go forward with it and if and if it's not, we'll we'll find an alter- alternative to make sure that everybody is content and happy. Now, uh as city councillor, I'm I'm committed to going forward with the projects in the CIP. I think that I think that the current city council did a fine job and and there are several things in there that that need to be implemented and changed. Um another thing is I would push for an airport authority for for YQL Airport. Um for a city of almost a hundred thousand people, and we can use Medicine Hat as another example, they had just built a brand new terminal there. And there are thirty thousand less people than us and we are so close to the border. Um I've personally driven to Great Falls, I've used our airport as well, but people drive to Great Falls, they drive to Calgary, they drive elsewhere to use a service. That's right in our backyard, and if we can hand the airport off to an independent authority, these are professionals that know what they're doing. Um it'll make it more more competitive, it will um in- increase um ridership uh certainly. Um for people wanting to go out of town, it'll be a convenience for them to use an airport that actually services them. And uh they, that would take the uh financial burden off of the city as well, if you had a privately run airport, the city doesn't even have to worry about it. You know, it would be run like a business, it would be run successfully and profitably, it would take the burden off of the taxpayers and it just makes sense. Right now, the airport is run by Lethbridge County and I have heard nothing but but. I will say complaints from the people that work at the airport and as somebody who has used our airport, it is, it is time that we move forward with with. Uh an airport authority and and developing um um a new, a new way of using our airport. And taking that that responsibility off of the people in the city, there's far more things to worry about than an airport that we could privately run, you know. Um transit is another big issue, I've actually ridden the bus a few times um during this campaign on the campaign trail, I've talked to transit drivers. I've talked to uh the higher ups at the transit offices as well, I've all and most importantly, I've talked into the riders on the transit. Because you can try and fix a problem all you like, but unless you hear it right from the people that use that service. You really don't know what you're talking about, you know, and what I've heard from those people is that we need to increase weekend service. We need to make sure that the the girl who works five o'clock in the morning opening up a restaurant has transit service if she doesn't have a car. We need to make sure that um the guy who closes the video game store at midnight at night has access to get home past past eleven PM. So hours is is big, the weekend service is another thing, weekends and holidays, we need to, we can't shut down transit. Just because there's a a holiday like Labor Day, the city does not stop just because we have a holiday. We need to at least have certain routes open to to provide access to those people. At 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 my place of business, sometimes people can't make it to work on a holiday because they rely on transit. And that's a, that's a big problem, we need to get in there and make sure that we extend the hours and improve weekend service and increase ridership. And make sure that it's accessible and affordable for everyone, students and seniors in particular. And 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 open up new routes, one of the routes to the west side, I can't remember, I think it's Route twelve is what it is, it goes from. The west side to to downtown to the south side and it is always full, I have heard um concerns from riders on that bus. More than, more than a few times, because it's just woefully inadequate, some buses, there's a handful of riders and then some buses, there's just overflowing. And being from the Philippines, I'm sure you guys know uh know how how full a bus can get for sure, but. When you have strollers and people with book bags and people in wheelchairs on a bus, that takes up some space, so I would, I would be looking at. Uh increasing routes on our busiest routes, you know, and on holidays and on weekends and later at night and earlier in the morning. It's it's an essential service for our city and it is, it is a very important service, because that's how a lot of people get around, there goes a bus right now. You know, they keep us connected and it's important that we hear the concerns of the people and address those and make sure that we have a transit system. That works for the people, that's going to reduce its carbon footprint, that's accessible and affordable for seniors and students. It it um, that's a, that's another, another big um big priority for me is to uh is to address that. And listening to the concerns of transit drivers and 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 the people that use the bus is the very first step in making sure that we have a transit system. That operates for everybody and a city councillor, to be quite frank, I would still ride the bus, I will still go door to door and ask people what their concerns are. Even if it isn't an election, that to me, that just seems to be their job. And I would love to come door to door and be like, hi, I'm Zachary Gibb, I'm your new city councillor and if there's anything that I can do for you. You be sure to let me know, give him my card and that's, that's the kind of openness that we need from a government and and kind of. Action that we need to see our city councillors doing instead of closed door meetings and inaccessibility, you know, not to say not to call out any names at all. Or or to say that that's what happens, but we need to really improve the openness and the transparency and the accessibility, absolutely, you know. And that is something that I certainly will commit to do, um once elected, I will continue to go to public events, I will continue to go door to door. To talk to, to talk to the people on the streets, to talk to drug users on the streets, if that's what needs to happen and ask them what their issues are, to talk to the people that use transit. To talk to our performers and our artists that want a performing arts center and to get their feedback before we even design it, you know, and and come up with the best. Solutions for everybody in Lethbridge and that's what I would commit to do a- as as your representative, a city councillor.
Oh, that's very good to hear, that's very informative.
Yeah.
Especially even with Uber coming in here too.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a interesting new service for Lethbridge for sure, yeah, I'll be interested to see how that uh that works with our transit programs. And and things like that, absolutely, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
So with with the changes in technology and the style of governance from bigger cities, smaller cities. That's why uh our guest, the Honorable Zachary Gibb, is a very good fit for the position. Because he's going to bring all of those uh ideas he just mentioned, you know, uh some will be definitely need some tweaking and some will be just. Uh right straightforward and right into the basket and will work uh right away. Um again, is there any uh, you have any more questions, John?
Yeah, we give you the floor, this is the moment we, because I know you have something important on October two.
Yes.
Where uh all of the candidates will be showing up in one form, you can invite them, you have your agenda where you're gonna be next, that and.
And your message uh in general to the.
Very good, very good, well, I appreciate your time, first of all, gentlemen, uh thank you, Salama, very, very much. I appreciate that, um like I said, uh I'm a pro-growth, pro-expansion candidate and I have faith and I believe in Lethbridge, I'm passionate about this city. I'm born and raised, I've grown up with this city and I wanna continue to grow with this city and to make smart decisions, smart financial decisions, smart. Business decisions on behalf of the citizens of Lethbridge and make us a a unique and vibrant place to attract business and and people and tourism and citizens. From all over, all over the world and we are doing a successful job at that and I would like to keep our foot on the gas and keep that going. I would like to improve our our transit services, I'd like to improve our airport services, our infrastructure with projects such as the Third Bridge. By doing things right the first time, so we're not uh spending millions of dollars more on projects that we could have just spent an initial, a smaller initial sum. To complete properly, instead of having to go back and and redoing it from scratch and 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 making sure that. That everyone's voice is heard, to protect our seniors, to protect our students and our young people, our 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 working class people. The families that choose to come to Lethbridge and and to be their voice and and to be somebody that they can approach and come talk to at city council. No matter how busy you are, you work for the people and that is the job of a councillor is to listen to what you have to say, whether you agree or disagree. And to offer a solution for these people and and that's very important. We need to work with our federal and our provincial partners to get the grants and the the funding that we need to start and complete these projects and and to. To firmly place us as the jewel of Alberta that we all know we are, we are. And to attract these people from bigger urban centers like Calgary and like Edmonton and bring them down to Lethbridge. We have a diverse economy led by the agricultural sector, we have small businesses, we have big businesses, we're a small town city. Wh- which means we have a a small town feel, we can get across town in ten minutes or less, we can, we can, we know our neighbors, we know the people that we. We talk to every day, but we have the amenities of a big city and the services of a big city. And and that is just a unique combination, we're a regional hub for southern Alberta and it's important that we, that we keep that going. And we keep, we keep our heads high and have that the pride for the city that we should have to make this just an incredible place. To to attract people from anywhere, absolutely anywhere. We need to make sure that our police and our fire services are taking care of our city services, you know. We need to make sure that uh response times for the citizens go down and the uh convenience and safety of our first responders go up. They risk their lives every day and the least that we could do is make sure that their jobs are are as simple and as convenient as possible. Which is why for things such as the west side fire station in addition to the to the police detachment, that is something that makes financial sense, it makes. It makes sense safety wise and that's something that I would, I would love to continue to push forward with. The safe consumption sites is another, another example of what we can do to better our our police and fire services as well. And we need to keep attracting immigration to town, you know, I want, I want your friends and your buddies from the Philippines to come here, we, we are a welcoming uh city. We're a welcoming province and we're a. We're a welcoming province and we're a welcoming country, and together we can do wonderful things, and the more people that choose to come to Lethbridge. The more opportunities that we will have as a city. And and uh we have amazing new restaurants, like there's a Sudanese restaurant from what I've seen, you know. I'd like to see a tagalab.
Like a melting pot now.
Yeah, we can make some didiguan or whatever that is. It's kinda scary. I wouldn't wanna try that. Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right. But eh those kind of things are what makes a city thrive, you know. Anybody can put up a Walmart. Anybody can put up a big box store anywhere, but it's those little unique businesses that attract people and and that. Offer you guys a chance to to bring your culture into town a little bit more, and it's incredible. And I am definitely a an inclusive candidate. Um I I believe that everybody should have equal say and and be welcome just as equally. And I think that um, I think that we can improve upon what we have done, the good work that we have done, and I'm totally for for doing that. Um I'm for um uh really being an ambassador for Lethbridge. As city councillors, we need to do everything we can to put Lethbridge on the map. And to make us a world renowned city even more than we already are. I wanna see us on those world maps, right under Calgary and right under Edmonton. As a place to go to. And as a city councillor, it's a, it's very important that you make smart business decisions and reach out to the right people. Uh the federal and provincial governments, other nations' governments too. We could work with the Philippines. We have great uh relationships with um governments elsewhere. In the world. Um and we need to do everything we can to to keep that momentum going and to build new bridges. And to and to forge new relationships and to make, make us just a diverse melting pot, like you said, um that's a great term. I'm also for infrastructure spending uh and and planning and properly planning and doing it right the first time, such as the Chinook Trail River Crossing. I think we're in agreement that. But that's a very important infrastructure piece for our city to to work on, and and for services such as curb side recycling, curb side recycling. Recycling only works when everybody does it, and I realize the concern with people don't want to uh spend an extra seven dollars uh on their utilities for this service. But I wonder how much more they will recycle if there's a blue bin in front of their house, you know, and the convenience is 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 just totally. Totally there, and it's it's for, and they can, they can feel free to utilize the recycling services, the recycling depots. I think those are all wonderful spots, but. This is for everyone. This is for the people that don't have access, the people that can't can't drive or or. Or can't put all their recycling in their backpack and get to them, you know. This is just an essential service that everywhere else seems to have, and we're lagging behind. And as city councillor, I would definitely be an advocate for pushing forward with that. Um and and for all of the other projects that we want, the exhibition expansion, like we can't turn our backs on our agricultural community. We need to really reach out and make sure that we can secure the funding for these projects, that we spend the funding that the city brings in smartly. And and move forward and look forward to a a beautiful vibrant Lethbridge that thirty years down the line will be unrecognizable to the Lethbridge of today. You know, it's fantastic. It's exciting to think about, and I'm excited to, I'm excited as a candidate to raise these issues. Um uh win or lose, like this is, this is an important election. We have a choice whether we move forward with these projects and. And and continue to grow and to blossom and to become vibrant, or to stay the same and and stagnate and and be regressive. We're a progressive city. We're a progressive community, and it is time that we look forward with with those projects, and that is something that I am. I'm willing and more than, more than willing to do as as a representative of all citizens of Lethbridge on city council.
Very nice, and uh what a vision. I'm uh, I'm I I'm in for it.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
That's very informative, and uh if you can see the uh page, the YouTube and the campaign that the honorable Gibb is running. It's all about the potential of the city and positivity. And you know, that's what we need. We can't be stagnant and, you know, just let uh things uh slip by. Uh just by doing what's uh, what used to be working. There's always gonna be a better way, and it's good right now, but it can be even greater.
This isn't politics as usual, gentlemen. This is about um, this is about securing a a great and progressive vision for the city. And yes, I do invite you to check out my website, zacharygibb.com. Um I have my full platforms there. You can get in touch with my campaign. Feel free to get in touch with me. My personal information's on there too. I'm more than willing to talk. That's, that's the job of a candidate, and that's the job of a city councillor. Furthermore, you can find me on Twitter. I'm at Zachary Gibb. Um I was surprised that I was able to secure my name, not the real Zachary Gibb, I'm at Zachary Gibb. And on Facebook too. Facebook um is a great uh documentary of of how far this campaign has come and and. And the issues that have been raised and the concerns that have been addressed and brought to my attention as as just a candidate from city council. And Zachary Gibb for Lethbridge City Council is my Facebook page. Give it a like, share it with your friends, get the word out, you know. This election isn't about me. It's about us and the vibrant future that we can build for Lethbridge. This isn't about any candidate. This isn't about. About myself personally. This is about what we can do together, and that is why this is so exciting.
Well, that's a high, high end point. So I just wanna take this opportunity, of course, uh we are uh live at Facebook as we speak. We had touched bases with the Latino community as we speak, with the Latino sports. It's Mister Emil Montoya mentioned on the message. That we had a very nice and interest, interesting talk with you.
Oh, very good.
So señor Emil Montoya, so. We got the the honorable Zachary Gibb, so uh we took the opportunity to thank them, of course, cause uh we were just crossing the the.
I appreciate any question that comes across my plate, and I look forward to talking to you as this continues and even after. Uh no matter what the result, I am a strong and passionate and committed citizen of this city, and I am so willing to help and to be there for. For everybody in our community.
So uh, thank you in behalf of.
Appreciate your time, yes.
I'm well educated this evening. I I speaking to.
All that he said is uh, is true and.
I'm uh, I'm 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 educated right now, and I uh, in behalf of my colleague, I believe they are too, and of course, the audience, that's uh. Very informative, very educated uh. Discussion with our uh honorable guest there, of course. Um please uh uh watch our uh continuing uh. Uh show, uh we're gonna have uh the deputy mayor of Coldale, Mister uh Jack Van Ryn tomorrow. We got the uh uh good councillor running for office as well, uh Miss Honorable uh Eileen Burke for Wednesday. And we got uh Mister uh Andrew Prokof, the mayor of Tabor on Thursday, so please stand by and we're gonna. I have it live with you as well. So uh I guess uh I uh, I'm pretty much.
On October the sixteenth, no matter if you agree or disagree with me or any of the other candidates. I implore you to exercise your right to vote. It is your responsibility and your duty, and it it will be. Your your voices that are heard and your uh uh ballots that that determine the future of our city. And it is important that you redo your research, you know your candidates, and I wish everybody the best of luck in this election. I've been having so much fun. Going door to door and talking to people and and hearing the concerns of our community, and it's been an incredible journey, but no matter who you vote for. It is important that you get out and do just that on October the sixteenth.
Exactly. So as Mister Zachary mentioned, uh make the change, be the change. So vote, get out there, exercise the right. In behalf of the Pinoy Hour, of course, uh and our honorable guests for this evening, Mister Zachary Gibb, running for office. Inviting you to exercise your right on on uh October sixteen, not just, I believe, on our city, but the whole of uh Canada itself. And uh, of course, I will see you around and uh, mabuhai, and uh, thank you so much for your time.
So much again.
Thank you very much.
By the way, will be posted on our wall and also Mister Zachary Gibb's wall, and uh please watch if you throw in some questions, you can. Basically, uh send him a message. A personal message will be fine as well, I believe.
Anytime.
There you go, and uh you can always watch our archives and of course get educated by our guest. And behalf of uh Pinoy Hour, of course, my name is John, and I have my colleague there, Mister Lou, uh saying exercise your right. And have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Give her a sorry for coming.
Very good.